Good evening and welcome to Monday, May 15th, Special Board of Education meeting. It is now 7:09 and we will call this meeting to order. At this time, we will welcome public comment. Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
Bill McGovern, 53 Ward Street. I'm going to apologize that I'm not going to be able to see you guys over there from where we are, I'm kind of limited on where I'm going to do it. But good evening. I am the President of the Lyman Hall Music Parents Association, a lifelong Wallingford resident and a past student in the Wallingford Public School System. Our son recently graduated from and our daughter is currently a junior at Lyman Hall in the Ag program. One of the constant activities both had throughout their high school tenure is the music department, in particular, marching band. I will be speaking of the particulars observed at Lyman Hall, but in past discussion with the Sheen Music Parents Association members, we find ourselves in similar situations. Sheen is the assigned guidance counselor and the Ag teacher. The music department staff is the one teacher that our students have constant contact with their four years at the high school. The relationship helps the student during their formative teenage transition into adulthood. In the six years involved with the Music Parents Association, I have seen the music department staff as more than teachers. They are coaches and mentors. While as teachers, they do the tasks other teachers do, planning, evaluating, grading, PPTs, 504s, school duties, meetings, conferences, award nights, among others. However, as directors, they have daunting task of crazy new personal schedules, handling large budgets from multiple sources, including the money you give them, what we supplement as the Parents Association and Student Activity Funds, scheduling buses for multiple trips to competitions, select and oversee support staff, deal with parent permissions, insurances, various vendors, fundraising, and many other tasks throughout the year. This includes hosting some of the largest events at the schools campuses. While most courses have standard evaluations, the product of the marching band director and their students is judged weekly during marching band season. This includes a New England and a national competition. The extensive rehearsals start with band camp, two weeks with two-a-days before the school seasons even starts, and continues through the school year to maintain the quality performances at additional events up to and including graduation. While the education system is pushing STEM-related pathways in evaluating class size in approving or rejecting courses, there are several programs that have not been run recently because of numbers. These include specialized courses for music majors, Advanced Placement Music Theory. These directors take programs that have ensemble groups that have sessions of 35 to 40, which is well above the 25 maximum in normal classrooms. Yet they don't have additional staff when they do these. Music educators also direct many extracurricular groups that can be affected by the lack of staffing, including after-school jazz ensembles, select chorus, leadership training, student leader groups, winter percussion, and color guard. These will all suffer if the music department is not staffed to its needed level. The music program also supports the community. Musical performances such as vocal performances at the senior center, band national anthems, in-game team sports, and halftime performances at home football games, town parades, and the Memorial Day observances. While the pandemic has recently been declared over, it is far from over for the music. No program was more affected in a long-term ensemble, a long-term. Ensembles and music in the school are about performing as a group. Middle school music students lost the opportunity to play or sing for the full year and a half because they had to remove their masks to do so. Online and virtual learning is not the same as performing together as a team. Yes, music ensembles are a team. The continuity has been broken and will take time for the numbers to increase. They are trying. There have been high school student outreach and mentoring to assist upcoming middle school student bodies to see the value from the involvement in music. But these efforts need time, music department teacher direction, and the board's support. I thank you for your time and consideration and ask that you continue to support the needed staffing in the music program for our students and all the other programs in the school system.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone in person. Tonight, I don't envy your position at all. Facing budget cuts, potential layoffs, and other reductions are not the favorite part of your job as Board of Ed, and I can relate to it. It's not the favorite part of the Board of Ed. Ann Barone Letterly, 344 Main Street, Moran teacher, for 30 years, proud parent of a 2018 Sheen graduate, and I am the Wallingford Education Association President. However, unfortunately, tonight, we're all here together because circumstances have led us here. These are challenging times in education. Picking up and moving on after COVID, learning loss, social-emotional issues, less engagement of our students, heightened student behavior, attendance issues, and so much more. Because of these factors, the need for student-facing professionals is even more critical at this time than any other time that I can think of. We need these people to be with students, helping them to be ready to learn and engaging then in the teaching and learning process once they are ready to learn. We need our dedicated WEA members to be coming to our schools and work with our students each and every single day. While all aspects of the Board of Education budget are important, things like PD, consultants, maintenance, supplies, securities, and curriculum review, classroom teachers, and building-based certified professional are absolutely vital to the success of our students. Our schools are our home, a place where students come daily to learn, to be appreciated for the people who they are, and to help them grow. Schools full of smiling and dedicated teachers and offering courses, classes, and programs to help them reach their potential. This is what our students need and this is what our students deserve. I urge you not to make the sacrifices in our student-facing professionals, our professionals who enjoy coming to our Wallingford Public Schools each and every single day to help students achieve their very best. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Rodriguez. I'm at Two Cider Hill Road. My name is Kristen Rodriguez and I am the trifecta. I'm a resident, a parent, and an educator within the Wallingford School District. I spent the bulk of my teaching career at an inner-city district. Our average deficit was anywhere between $10 to $15 million a year. So let me paint you a picture of what my former district looked like. Maxed-out classrooms, upwards of 25 students per class. No para educator supports in any classrooms except pre-K. One nurse split between two school buildings. I often went to school each day hoping there would be no accidents. One school social worker or school psychologist for over 200 students per building, and sometimes those professionals were split between buildings. One teacher of multilingual learners split between multiple buildings. Special education caseloads of 25-plus students. Test scores were low because we had no support. Social-emotional learning could not be met because we were not supported. Teachers were forced to be nurse, school counselor, educator, lawyer, and so much more. I left because I had no support. I was burnt out and being run into the ground daily. When my husband and I were thinking about where we wanted to live, start our family, and grow, Wallingford was the only option. Well-staffed classrooms, support staff, special area staff. I knew my children would receive the best possible education and I've been proven right so far, as my oldest son started at Rock Hill, transitioned to DAG, and is now a junior at Lyman Hall. Every step of the way, he had the supports he needed in order to thrive. This past year, I was beyond blessed to get hired as an educator within the district. I cannot even begin to explain to you the difference it has made in my life and my family's life to work in a district that has historically been financially stable and has had the means to support not only their students but their staff as well. I love my job again. I've been inspired to continue learning and growing because the resources have been available to help me do just that. A $3.5 million deficit to the education budget is just the beginning. I've seen firsthand what a cut of this magnitude will do. It will force staffing reductions and impact programs and services offered throughout the district, which will directly impact our students' educational experience and social-emotional experience. What will be next? This is a slippery slope to start sliding down and I urge you with the utmost respect from continuing down this path because again, I know firsthand what it ends up with, what it ends up looking like. Our families, my family, my children deserve better and more than that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Good evening.
Good evening. John Bowe, 8 Perkin Drive in Wallingford. I didn't grow up in Wallingford, but I got here as quickly as I could. I've been in town for over 20 years now. I've been a parent in Wallingford schools for more than that. My oldest is a graduate of one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school here in town, and graduated from George Washington University and started a great career in DC. I have another son who finished two elementary schools in Wallingford, one middle school and one high school. We have one left in high school. I haven't been and met this board, but I've met a few faces here. As we know, more than a decade ago, there were some very contentious discussions around tough budget times. In the wake of the financial collapse in 2008, the school board and the finances in the town were hurting. And a decision was made to upend generations of learning processes and pathways that our children have as we went through reconfiguration. It wasn't pretty, we came out okay, but there were tough decisions in those times. Again, the feeling is that times can be tough. But the cuts don't have to be people-based. When we look at the programs that change the lives of our youth, it's often that one touch from that one professional. There is no school professional district-wide that has the touch of the high school music director. Music in the high schools, whether it's strings or chorus or band, has a reach that goes farther than any of us in this room. There is no activity that engages our children regardless of their money or their appearance or their cognitive ability, their grades. Chorus and band don't have cuts. All you need is the passion and the willingness to be there. The endeavor in the music programs in both Lyman Hall and Sheen High Schools are huge. They bring people from around the country, around the state, to our town. There is probably no single larger one-day event in this town at any of our schools, on any of the properties that this group controls, than one of those band home shows. This past fall, there were 17 high school marching bands and their families and the band followers and the folks from across the country that judge these competitions. One day at Lyman Hall High School, Powder Puff's not that big. In order to continue to provide opportunity for every single student in our high schools, we must maintain adequate staffing and in no place is that more important than in the music programs. If you are parents, you've had kids, they've lost games, they've been cut from teams perhaps, but they could join strings. Maybe we wished they hadn't, I don't know. But music was there and it was a constant. Now, as there is turnover coming to Lyman Hall, it might superficially look easy to make some changes where somebody's leaving anyway. But those changes won't just happen for next year. They will ripple out further and further and further. If you look at the makeup of Sheen or Lyman Hall bands, it's students from every part of Wallingford. And the bands are an attraction. You will have students from out of district seek placement into VowAC so they can be a part of the marching band that has placed second for two years in a row at national competition or take part as a part of color board, color guard, that has been first place for two years in national competition. There's not a sport at either high school that has that kind of record. This is not possible with a single music instructor at Lyman Hall High School. If the quality of the experience of your children, of our children matters, we've got to maintain that contact so that these young people can be nurtured, all of them. Thank you.
Melanie Risaci, 9 Platt Drive here in Wallingford. I have lived here pretty much my whole life. I've lived here for over 40 years. I am a Sheen graduate. I have three children that have gone through the district, pre-reconfiguration, post-reconfiguration. They've been in the elementary schools, the middle school, and Sheen High School. And now, we're at this time where there is this $3.5 million cut. And even with that cut though, there's still, the budget that will be for this year is still $2.8 million higher than the current year. With that, I'm wondering, where will those cuts be? Are they going to be for student-facing services? Because I don't think they need to be. With $2.8 million higher than the current year this year, it seems that whatever needs to be covered in union contracts could be covered there. I'm not sure how much increases in utilities are, but an additional $2.8 million, just, I'm hoping that there'll be a lot of transparency as to what those cuts are going to be and what they need to look like with an increase of $2.8 million from the current year. I'm wondering what class sizes will be increased to. I know currently, if there's classes that have at least 10 students, they're holding those classes. We're hearing that there may be electives cut at Sheen High School in the English Department, that there's going to be less classes that are being offered. They're going to raise class sizes to potentially, they're going to cut it if there's 15. And that's maybe what the policy is, but I can't find it written anywhere. I would love if someone could point it out to me where that's written, what the minimum class size needs to be. I really think we need to pay attention, have classes be offered, have opportunities be offered, and that we really try really hard to keep the mental health staff there. It's been really important. My husband is a coach on one of the teams. There's been lots of mental health issues and supports that need to be for these kids. The coaches are also acting as counselors. We're trying to help kids have opportunities while supporting them mentally and there's just not enough support staff to go around. So as you look for your choices with the increase of $2.8 million from last year, I'm asking that you consider what the coaches take on with their small stipends that they have for the amount of work and time that they're putting into the students and really getting to know them as individuals and supporting them and going to their prom pictures and supporting them in anything that they're doing in the classroom. Coaches are more than just coaches. They're definitely a support for the students and I ask that you take these things into consideration and that we're not cutting opportunities for students that can still be there with a budget much larger than the one that is right now.
Hello. Mike Taro, 168 South Main Street. I also have a daughter in the system. So I'm not in favor of teacher cuts before central curriculum office cuts. Since the last superintendent, our central office has grown tremendously in non-student contact positions that were formerly teacher positions that got paid small stipends, had additional workdays, and were still in direct contact with students in their classes they taught. Cutting teachers gives less opportunity for my child to be in small classes. It gives my child less opportunities to choose from multiple topics within her academic level and it also affects her ability to take multiple electives, which makes sure that she is a well-rounded individual. Once again, make sure that your choices are based on student contact as your number-one priority. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. At this time, moving on to item number three, can I have a, I will make a motion to go into executive session. I have a first and second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are now in executive session. Good evening and welcome back to this evening's Board of Education meeting. We are now out of executive session and I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Joan Papale effective June 30th, 2023. Joan Papale has been a special education teacher since August of 1999 for a total of 24 years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Can I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. But I'd like to say a word.
Absolutely. Mr. Ross, please.
Okay, I've known Joan for a number of years and this is a huge loss. She's been a special education teacher and she's worked wonders and I just want to congratulate her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Joan has also done an awful lot with the heart monitor because, I'm sorry, the issue that she had, a personal one. And I just want to share that when I was an administrator of a private school that did not have a defibrillator, she got one for me for free. She was able to talk to the, I forgot the name of the place that she got it from. So she did do a lot of good service outside of the system as well.
Thank you both and we wish her good health and fortune in her retirement and we hope that she enjoys her retirement. Next, I have an approval of a resignation. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Kayla Raski effective June 30th, 2023. Kayla Raskati, I believe, has been a physical education health teacher since August of 2020 for a total of three years in Wallingford Public Schools. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That will be it for items four and five. On our agenda, we are moving on to item six, the Budget Workshop. This evening, we will be conducting a budget workshop for the purpose of discussion of the 23-24 budget. This is a workshop. There will not be any consensus taken on this. There will be no action taken on this. This is an opportunity for Central Office to share different scenarios and different ideas with the Board of Education, but again, no action or consensus will be taken on this. The Board of Ed will also, we will publish it in the proper timeframe, but we will also have another budget workshop on May 24th, Wednesday, May 24th, for those of you who would also like to attend. Okay, I don't know if I'm handing this over to Superintendent Bellisi or Mr. Barone. Do you want to start?
Sure. Good evening. So what's up here is a Google sheet and we had prepared some potential adjustments to the budget and as we show, we'll go line by line and when it comes, you'll see that, I'll open up some lines so we can discuss each one individually. I don't want to just put 10 items out at once because I think we'll end up jumping back up and down. So I, Probably. How's that?
That's better.
Better? Let me try a little more? No? Okay, all right. So, and just, I mean, this is somewhat of a simple worksheet, although sometimes I find things in Google never to be simple even though they should be. But, you know, we requested $116,736,919. The mayor recommended the $113,221,919, which gives us a difference of $3.515 million that, you know, we got to reduce the budget by. Okay, so that, and that's just what is there at the top. So then, you want me to, I'll open them?
Nope.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barone. Appreciate it. Before we go ahead and get started, just wanted to go over just a couple of things that we have done to get to this point. So our plan for this evening is to, as Mr. Barone had shared, is to go through and start with our non-staff items first. As a central office team, we've spent a lot of time going back and reviewing the budget that we started with this year and the budget that was adopted by the board. And we've looked at different departments to look and see where we can make some cuts. Because we, as everyone has shared here earlier and as we've talked all along, we are unfortunately in a position where eventually we will have to make some staff cuts, but we're trying to do the best we can to minimize those cuts as best we can. So we really did try and spend a lot of time to look at things different ways and to go through every department and all the budgets that we have to really present a thoughtful budget look or deeper dive look at what we have so far. Again, these are just ideas and things we've talked about at Central Office and so we thought it would be best that if we at least start with the non-staff cuts, we can start to have some discussion and hopefully get some feedback as to where all of you are coming from as well and the public has shared a lot of theirs. So we'd like to just kind of move through and just share with you where we started. So as Mr. Barone has stated, we do know we have that difference of $3.5 million as was given out today. I know Town Council is holding a special meeting on Wednesday night to review the budget as well, so, because I believe it was vetoed. So we'll see if any, I don't think much of that will impact us other than the $290,000 that was approved and given to us, allocated at one point to three different items, but then up for discussion as well. But at this point, since nothing is finalized, this is all just a workshop and things for us to think about, but I didn't want us to forget about that factor as well. So the first, one of the first things we started to take a look at, and I'm going to just, in our discussion was looking at the strategic items. So part of the budget, we have the sustained and we also have our strategic items. So this year's strategic budget was made up of the $759,014. So we took a look at that and our discussions that we have had here was that at this particular time, we were not looking to fund the items that were labeled or identified in the strategic budget. So those items, some of the items, as we went to Town Council, we had discussed and we used some of our appropriated money from the bus transportation contract that ended. So we did fill some of those strategic items in a different way with different funding, but overall, we were looking to make that as a cut. So I don't know if you want me to stop after each one so we can have discussion?
Can I just further explain the spreadsheet? So the cut is obviously under the column D where it says cut reduced amount. And then, you know, if we, you know, and I know we're not going to take consensus tonight, but if we were to accept that, then that would reduce the deficit to the amount in column E. And then, column F would be if I need to make any notes based on what I hear tonight. So that's,
So, Mr. Barone, it's the $3.515 minus the $759 and then as you have different items, that deficit number hopefully is going down by the impact of whatever that reduction is.
Yes, that would be a much clearer way of saying what I tried to say.
That's fine. So we're now going to say, like, these are things that we're taking out of the budget to try to get down to a zero. Okay?
And again, of the $759,000 in strategic, we, we have $250,000 from the Durham check that we've had allocated this year to do several of those projects related to some paving, some ballards, and some other security and safety type items.
So can you give us the page number in our budget? So can you give us the page number in our budget book? Is it 15?
I think it's-
Section 315?
In the budget book? I'm sorry, I was working off the latest presentation. Okay. Yeah, that would help.
Just to clarify, if you're in the most recent presentation that we shared with the-
Or the presentation-
Town Council.
Which one?
Page four, right? That one was dated Wednesday, April 19th. I'm on page, or excuse me, slide 20, or actually, slide 19 starts the strategic plan items. But on page 20, I can highlight which ones we used. We used the Durham appropriation money for. So it was the ballards, the front and rear entrance, Lyman Hall and Mark Tishian High School. Repair of the playground blacktop and walking paths, Parker Farm Elementary School. We did the blind replacement for 11 classrooms at Rock Hill Elementary School. The card readers at multiple schools, the entrances and exits, excuse me, cybersecurity, replacement of intercoms at two elementary schools. And I believe that covers our items.
And we also had the lights-
Correct.
They were not part of strategic, but they were part of the capital items we requested from the town to fund.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So then, to clarify, we may be taking out 759,000 here, but we have funded them through additional funds that the Town Council gave us. 250,000 of that at least as the Durham funds, and we did that all based on safety items.
Correct. Our focus on that was safety.
Okay. That's helpful to remember. Thank you. Any questions on this line item? Mr. Ross?
Yeah, the, the lights, are we talking about the four lights in the back of Sheehan High School?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this line item? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Barone. Thank you.
And the next item is, really, it's the contingency line. And we had said it at 500,000. We thought we could reduce it by 300,000, bring it down to 200,000 in the budget, reduce it by 300,000.
And can you give more details on what that is used for and what the historical balance has been?
Well, the historical usage of it, you know, we've spent typically less than 100,000 on average over the last several years. Some years, we didn't spend any of it, but it's used for, it's used somewhat for emergency-type things that might come up that are not budgeted, and also for unknown items, like if we're in negotiations, we may have put money in there for the settlement, for contract settlements, et cetera.
Because sometimes our contract, we don't finalize the contract, and then it goes retro, so we have to catch up with what the change is?
Yes, or also, we may finalize it before it goes retro, but after the budget's been developed. So if we finalize it in May-
So it's a true-up?
Yeah, it's a true-up, correct.
Okay.
Okay, we got a couple of questions over there.
Mrs. Costelli.
Thank you. We are aware that, I'm assuming you did the math for five contracts next year? Because there's five union negotiations for next year.
But those are the following budget year.
Oh, they would be the following.
Yeah, so those would be in the contingency for the 2425.
Correct. So we're good for, it's just the ones that we just, okay, got it. Thank you.
It's the ones that, yes.
Mr. Vado?
You know where I'm going with this.
No, but-
I don't want the 300,000 taken out of that. I feel that we have many times unforeseen expenses, and it should stay at the 500. Mrs. Costelli's going to argue with me on this. For instance, the utilities, you know, they, we probably have a, an increase in those utilities that you said that would be going up, and you might need more money for that from the present budget, correct?
That was this year, but we budgeted for them for next year, so, yes.
I know, but my, I'm using that as an example, that this year, what we budgeted for utilities probably wasn't enough, correct?
It definitely wasn't.
It wasn't enough, so we have contingency to take it from. That's why I'm a firm believer in keeping it at 500,000 because there's many unforeseen things that happen. Our schools are old, and you never know what's going to happen in the schools. So I just feel the money should stay up there.
Mrs. Costelli.
And you know, I've always been an advocate for that, Mike. Absolutely. In fact, I was the one last time that said, bring it back up to 500,000, if I remember correctly. In this instance, I'm okay with bringing it down to the 200,000, and if we have to, we'll go to the Town Council for the funds if we find that we have an instant, an issue or an instance where we fought, like a boiler breaks or whatever, whatever it might be, that we would have used our contingency for. They're kind of forcing our hand here to reduce our contingency. That's my opinion.
Mrs. Regan?
Mr. Barone, didn't you just, I thought you wrote down, we haven't, we've used less than 100,000 of our contingency funds over the last, how many years?
So we took a look and did it, I'm sorry, Mr. Barone, we took a look and did a 10-year average, and it's around 100,000 a year.
Right.
So some years, it fluctuates, some years it's more, some years it's not.
So I would be comfortable knocking it down by the 300,000, knowing that still gives us a cushion based on our averages, and agree with you, Mrs. Costelli, if push comes to shove, then we can go to the town for something. I'm good with that.
Mr. Vado, and then I'll speak.
First of all, I'm against going back to the town and asking for more money. That sort of admits we didn't do our budget totally correct. I was going to say something else, and I forgot. If I remember it, I'll, I'll ask.
I also voted in favor of keeping it at 500, but given the times and what we have, if I'm to, have to choose between keeping a teacher or increasing contingency, I'm keeping a teacher.
Agreed.
Ms. Reed, I'm sorry, Dr. Reed?
Totally agree. I, again, the 500,000, but keeping a teacher more important, or two teachers.
Or two. Okay, any other questions on this line item?
I am-
Oh, Mr. Vado?
I, when I say 500,000, I don't mean at the expense of teaching jobs. I don't want to make that quick. There's other places perhaps.
Any other questions? Next line item. I feel like I'm Vanna White up here. Next line item. She has more fun. This isn't fun. This is hard. I appreciate all the work that went into this on Central Office. I know you have, and your team have been working on it. Superintendent Bellisi and the Department heads weekly for many hours. Okay, curriculum.
So this is our curriculum. Mrs. Latour did a wonderful job looking through her budget, and she's going to share some of the things she looked at. But this is where we landed with looking at some of the items there. And so I'm going to have Mrs. Latour just share some of the details of what she looked at.
So the curriculum budget is comprised of instructional supplies, instructional equipment, textbooks, professional development for the entire district, et cetera. And so basically, for the 644,000 and change that is up there, right off the top, we took the 300,000 out for the reading program. While we have not heard back yet from the state regarding our waiver to the curriculum that you all approved back in February, they also put out the financial extension waiver, which we applied for, and there's a current bill waiting to be voted on for the delay. So that was a pretty easy cut. The rest of the cuts, what I did was look at the different supply lines for each department. I took out a lot of instructional software, some of which we decided to wait and forego. Some, we will use unencumbered funds to purchase this year and purchase in multiple-year contracts so that we're not just adding them right back next year. We looked at the enrollment projections at the high school and reduced some of our textbook lines, still purchasing the text just at a lower amount. We looked at our summer school line item, and we cut that back. Currently, we offer free summer programming, both in summer Sizzler, in elementary reading and math, as well as credit recovery for middle school and high school. So we cut back some of the funds that we would use to do those programs in the summer. I cut the conference line for the district. I did not remove it entirely at this point, but we reduced it significantly. And then we looked at things that, what I call hard cuts, things that we decided to go in a different direction. So the money that I had budgeted for World History Books, we're using an open resource that's free instead. We looked at our curriculum writing stipends, and we looked at what we accomplished this year versus what we budgeted for next year, and we were able to reduce that line. Some of our bigger ticket items, the contract we have for the equipment at the planetarium, it's no longer being supported, so I don't need a maintenance contract anymore. That was a savings of 8,000. So all in all, it came up to the 644 without a tremendous amount of things that we couldn't, you know, as I said, use unencumbered funds for this year. So our students will still have access to the instructional software that they're used to having. Our teachers will still have access to that as well, and that they still have the opportunity to go, because some conferences, we do have to send our staff to. That it's, it's good for not only the changes to like the AP curriculum or the ECE annual training that we need to do, our literacy how work that we're doing. So that's kind of comprises the 644.
Mr. Vado?
I can't see the number for professional development. Does that say 300,000 or 500?
No, the 300,000 is Personnel Department contingent.
That's the contingency number, Mike.
I bet, you read my mind. Plus, we have the 500, we had a 500,000 placeholder for that waiver, for the-
So in the budget-
The reading program, yeah.
Was only 300,000.
Oh, it was 300, that's right, you're right, all right.
Yep.
All right, so if we add the 300 to the other, okay, I'll save my, my opinion for later on.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, this money, does this include outside consultants or?
No, I don't generally carry outside consultants in our operating budget. I use grant funds for that.
Okay, so that'll, that's something we can discuss later?
You can absolutely discuss them later. Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Passeretti?
You mentioned something about the summer programs.
I did.
How much money would that actually be cutting?
So I cut 25,000 off of the summer programming, actually, about 30,000. So it's clerical help, it's pro-professional help, and the funds for teacher salaries for some of the programming. My priority is credit recovery for middle school and high school. From there, after that, would be elementary programming for reading and math, and then the lowest priority would be the summer Sizzler. So it all depends on enrollment. It depends on staffing willing to teach it. But as I said, we don't charge for any of our summer programming. So I left money that I felt was necessary based on trends for credit recovery, especially at high school. We don't want to disrupt our students' progress towards graduation. And so that's how I prioritize the need there.
So how is this, how is this affecting our kids, the cuts that-
To summer programming? Depending on how much continues to be cut, it's, the potential is there not to have the summer Sizzlers, and those were new. We started those after COVID as a means of providing enriching opportunities for our elementary and middle. So we would run yoga camp for a week, or a STEM camp, or a STEAM camp for a week. Our elementary reading and math, we have been doing for quite some time. That will hurt a little bit, obviously. But when I think about where we are and the services we provide, middle school and high school for summer was my top priority for our students.
Okay, so 30, we need to find 30,000 to put that back.
You know, I'm going to say not necessarily, and here is why. Our summer programming is dependent on the staffing that we have to teach summer programming. So I have left money in that line. We are starting our list-making for students for the credit recovery piece. And then depending on the remaining budget dollars that I have, I will carry it into that elementary program. And then if I still have money left, depending on how much stuff I have wanting to work over the summer, I'll carry that into the summer Sizzler. So it depends. It's feasible if we don't have a tremendous amount of need at the high school, middle school, or even elementary that we might be able to run a few of each. It's hard for me to tell at this point because we're just starting giving, we're five weeks out to the end of the year identifying what our need is.
Okay, so we could put a bookmark in that for now.
Yeah.
Let's put a bookmark in that. Thank you.
Any other questions about the curriculum cuts?
Mr. Dorr? Mr. Dearing?
Thank you. So I had similar concerns about that. I understand that we have a lot of difficult decisions to make. I certainly have an open mind on all of this until I see everything that we need to go through. Certainly, we might find something that's more essential, and we might decide to cut this. But I would also have similar concerns about removing that. I could see that being very beneficial for our students. And also, I apologize for not saying this earlier. I just wanted to say that I would also have concerns on the first item on your list, the strategic plan specifically about the instructional coaches and the assistant of buildings and grounds. Seeing about the direction we're taking our district, I could see some of those being very essential. I'd be curious to see other opportunities to come instead.
I will say, for the staffing that we have, who have currently volunteered for summer programming, it's light. So I am, you know, I just want to, with all transparency, the cost that is reflected on this list may not impact summer programming at all. You know, time will tell on that, and we have a little bit of time to still flush that out a little bit. But currently, our staffing level for summer programming is, is light in the middle school, high school credit recovery, and a little bit heftier at the elementary. We may have enough still with what's remaining in the budget, Mr. Dearing, to provide a little bit of everything.
I appreciate that information. Again, I still have an open mind until I see everything else that we're considering. Thank you.
Mrs. Latour, this is probably going to be like a needle in a haystack question, but I, I'd like to throw you a curveball.
Sure.
I know the summer Sizzlers is a newer program. Do we have any idea what the truancy rate is on that? I shouldn't say truancy because it's a summer program, but how many kids come five days a week versus how many kids kind of drop in and out?
So the summer Sizzlers are very short. They're very short experiences, a week, sometimes two weeks at the most. And generally, the attendance for those has been strong.
Okay.
The classes are not very, very large, but not very, very small. And our intent was that, was to just keep the connection back to school, and primarily too, especially for our littlest learners, was the socialization piece. Because coming out of COVID, we recognized that kids needed to be outside and engaged socially with same-age peers in things that are interesting and fun and engaging. And our staff are able to put in proposals for things, and they've been incredibly creative. We have maybe five or six proposals for this summer that range from STEM STEAM-type of activities to, there's a running club, there's yoga. So there are just, you know, really cute opportunities for kids. And that goes through kindergarten through generally grade six or seven. So there are maybe five or six. There's not a tremendous, there's not a ton.
Okay.
The attendance is strong for that. The middle school and high school attendance is regulated through board policy because it's recovering credit. So that's quite strong unless there's an emergency.
Yeah, I was just worried about the summer Sizzlers. Yeah, okay.
Any other board questions before we go on to the next line item? Dr. Reed?
So in terms of the credit recovery, students could choose not to take it and to retake the course the next year. So you might actually have some room there. You might not need those teachers so much, and might, that might go to the funds of the summer Sizzler employees. Is that correct?
Yeah, our strongest program has definitely been at the elementary level in terms of, you know, the kids are brought there by their parents. And the middle school and high school, high school has the opportunity for failures to retake the class, you know, in a, in the following school year. My thought, though, with that is for our juniors- My thought though with that is for our juniors, you know, who are going into their senior year, and really not disrupting their ability to graduate on time with their cohort of peers was a priority for me. So realistically, I think it's a cut that we can withstand without a huge disruption to what we're doing based on the staffing, as I said. But, you know, we're still plugging along, instructing and grading and assessing. So we'll see where we land at 612 in the coming weeks.
Seeing no other questions, we'll go on. Mr. Barone.
Okay, so this is, this is, this $65,000, it represents the dispensers we need to implement for next year. And we, the bid came in, and we thought we would just purchase them this year, because we can get them implemented, installed in the summer rather than wait till the end, till later in the, or early to next school year. These are dispensers that are going to be implemented in the, all the ladies' or girls' or females' bathrooms. One, at least one male bathroom in each school and any of the unisex bathrooms.
And this is a state mandated one, right? That's the state mandated one?
This is another unfunded state mandate.
Yeah, this is the state mandated, and this is, this is just the dispensers. The products are budgeted with, and depending on the school, either we're buying them or the cleaning company is depending on how the school is maintained.
Correct. And for the public, this is new legislation that we had to put the dispensers in all of the, as Mr. Barone said, female restrooms from grades three through 12. One bathroom, one male bathroom, and each one of the schools, three through 12, and all unisex bathrooms. The legislation did not give any funding for it. The legislation did however allow that districts could go out and request donations for the products. So it's another one of the unfunded mandates. So, alright, so this will come off, and we'll see this then, if, once we get through the process, we'll see this in our June operations on another way to use what's left of our unencumbered balance for this year. So we're going to move it from next year's budget to this year's.
Correct.
It's not, it's nothing that can go away, because we have to do it by law.
Unless they somehow repeal it the next couple of weeks, but yes.
Correct. And the nice thing is it does allow us to get it sooner. And then our staff can work on installing all of them over the summer.
Mr. Ross. Yeah, I've had a couple people ask me, and I know it's going to sound foolish, but I don't have the answer. What would happen if we ignored a state mandate like this? What are the penalties? I don't know the answer to that. We'll have to find out. I've had two or three people ask me, one on the town council.
Right. I don't think it's something we'd like to do. So, you know, I can definitely look into the exact consequences or what that would be if we don't do it. But I do feel that it is something we need to follow. I mean, it's something that's out there. And so I wouldn't recommend not implementing it, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
Well, I agree with you 100%. We've got to follow it, but this person, I need to give him an answer.
Absolutely. I'll get it for you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you.
I hope it wasn't our state rep that asked the question, who voted, which I don't know how he voted. Okay, any other questions on the $65,000? Okay, Mr. Barone. Yeah, you're all over this.
IT, okay. The, this is some software we were going to purchase a multi-year license on related to the, is it the Securly piece?
So this is Securly, I believe in ClassLink, that we're going to make sure we use our unencumbered funds to purchase ahead of time, so that we can take that then out of the, this line, these two, this line as well.
And just for the public who may not be aware, Securly, Mrs. Vayou, do you want to describe how that monitors students and any potential risks to students that could be identified through the use of that software? It's pretty powerful. We've had it for a few years now. And can you also add what the district does when there are issues that come over Securly as far as coordinating efforts with the police department for student safety?
Sure. There's a couple of pieces. One is the safety monitoring on student Chromebooks. It does monitor students at risk and does notify principals. If something happens at night, and it's something that doesn't seem like it could wait till the next morning, the police are called by Securly to do a wellness check on the child. We also have another piece that's called Classroom that allows teachers to control the Chromebooks or lock them down to one site so they're not wondering, doing, maybe going, jumping on a different site while she's, or he is trying to instruct something. So that's another piece of that. But we have a great relationship with the Wallingford PD that they're able to do that for us, so it's been very valuable.
Have we seen a spike in the instances of Securly, without giving details, but have we seen a spike post-COVID?
I'd really kind of have to look, because it is hard to compare.
Okay, that's fair. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
I knew certain times of year there was a spike, and I just didn't know overall if there had been an increase over COVID. Okay, thank you. Any other board questions? Mrs. Castelli.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. So are you saying the software for $49,700, if I'm reading it correctly, because, I don't know, my eyes aren't working very well tonight. We're going to, is the soft, is this Securly software? And we're not going to take, we're not going to use it, but we're going to get, but the police department is going to be able to
We're keeping exactly what we have. We're just not doing a multi-year renewal.
Oh, we're keeping it, but we're not doing a multi-year renewal?
Did I say that right, Mrs. Vayou?
So, okay, so it's not going away. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, we're actually going to be purchasing a multi-year, so we will be taking out of next year's budget. But we are keeping the software, yes.
So what's the, so the 49,000 means that it's coming out of next year's budget? And is it going to be unencumbered for this year? In the 23 budget?
Correct.
Again, so that we'll see that, like the dispensers in next month's operations?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So once the, once all of the ideas and things get finalized, if you are to approve what we are thinking, then anything we're looking to take out of the budget for next year that we're seeking approval then later on for unencumbered funds, to use unencumbered funds for some of them.
Okay.
And we looked at, with all of our software, is it, can we get a multiple year, a multiple year deal? So that it lessens, one takes it out of this budget, but then lessens the cost along the way. Right, so it's two, it's two different items there. So, go ahead, Mrs. Vayou, is that what you were going to say?
I just want to clarify, so these are two different software packages. One is ClassLink, which we use as a single sign-on solution for staff and students. That piece will be a multi-year contract. The Securly piece, we recently renewed, and I was able to add another year in a grant. So it does not need, it's already paid through next year, so that's why, that's just a straight cut, basically.
And neither of these items were in the strategic budget, if you're trying to correlate that. These are, these were, these items we've been using for several years. They're not the
They would be in the operating budget.
I know, but I think that some, there's maybe some confusion, because we had some other software in cybersecurity-type software, I think, and that's a different product.
Correct.
Any other questions before we go to the next line item? Okay, come on, Dominic, big number, big number.
Special ed. And I'm just keeping a running tab of these in that new column G, just if you're wondering why there's numbers there. It's just a running total of the proposed cuts.
Okay, in terms of this special education budget, my budget's probably one of the ones that's the least flexible, because a lot of it, the majority of it is tuitions and transportation as well as outside services that we need to contract for, specifically occupational therapy, physical therapy, behavior technicians, and registered behavior technicians. So those are all services based on IEPs that are legally mandated that we cannot reduce. So when looking at our budget, the cuts that we have made are specifically software. So we really looked at what are some software and testing supplies that we're using right now that we can reduce or reallocate. So we have, in addition to the ARP-ESR funds that we have for the district, we received ARP IDA funds. So I was able to, although the scope of the use of ARP IDA is very narrow, we were able to use some of those funds to purchase some testing supplies as well as some assistive technology for reading that we use district-wide, specifically text help and learning ally. So those are two pretty large contracts, but those are tools that the majority of our students are using on a regular basis. So the 151,000 reflects a cut of those items that were actually put into ARP IDA, which needs to be spent by the end of June. So that was something that we were able to do. Yes.
What would we have used those funds for in lieu of where we're putting them now?
So originally, we had those funds earmarked for professional development, some paraprofessional staffing, some nursing, and some other personnel items that I am looking at Medicaid funds for next year. So we haven't cut any specific services to students. We were just creative in the way that we were able to move them, things around. And Medicaid is something that we have, we charge Medicaid, well, we receive Medicaid reimbursement for any medical services that we provide students. So this is something that we use if we have a service that we weren't planning for. So we always have conversations at all of our board meetings about how my services kind of go in and out, and my costs go in and out. So Medicaid is one of those funds that we're able to use for that. No problem. Mr. Doring.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, you just lost me a bit. So you're saying these services, these softwares are not being removed, or they are being removed?
They're not being removed. We're using ARP IDA funds for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So Mrs. Turner, in the, we're looking at 23, 24, in the 24, 25 budget, these would have to go back into operating? Because ARP funds would be gone.
So I was able to secure reduced two-year contracts. So we're hoping to reduce the budget.
Eventually, this is coming back into operating?
Yes. All of this money will be coming back into operating. These are all softwares that we do use.
So this is one of the, as opposed to, I'm not comparing you to Mrs. Latour, but as opposed to Mrs. Latour's reading curriculum, that's, that would have been, sorry, reading program. Oh my gosh, she hates it when you call it a curriculum, not a program. Don't put that in the paper. It's a reading program, not a reading curriculum for $500,000. She hates me when I do that. Mrs. Latour, that would have been like a one-time purchase. So it does concern me that we're, because we've always been very crystal clear about what's in sustained, what's in strategic, and nothing that's recurring is going to go in, is going to end up in strategic. So this does concern me that we're, I mean, it's, we're in tough times. We have to take 100, again, I go back to, do I save a body? Do we take it out? I appreciate this and whatnot. I just have to, in my mind, come to terms with the fact that this is going back into the budget at some point.
This will impact the budget in upcoming years.
This is a pay now, pay later thing?
Correct.
There's a lot of that going on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else right now? Okay.
So really not taking any services away?
No, Ms. Rata, I'm not taking any services away. We're just being creative in terms of how we can provide the services that we need to provide.
Okay, so I guess this one's mine. The $53,200 basically represents a couple things. In lieu of renewing the cop, or renewing a copier lease, we're going to just extend it. We're going to refurbish the equipment and get a few more years out of it. So this, in two to three years, will impact us, because we'll go out the bid and eventually we'll probably run into a price increase unless the copier prices come down in the next few years. It's also, a piece of it is, I had some conference money that I'm not going to utilize, about $4,200 to go away to conferences for different training that I took out of my budget. And then I also reduced some of the copier based on the actual number of copies we're making. We've seen a little bit of a dip in the number of copies we make, and it was way down during COVID, but we're out of COVID now, and it's not getting back to where we thought it would be. So there was a little bit of capacity there. And my, we're not quite sure why, but we think it's because of all the Chromebooks we've deployed, that there's actually going to be less printing, but we don't, you know, we haven't proven that yet.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Any question, Mr. Rata, and then Mr. Ross.
Not sure if you said this at the very beginning. Do we lease these some, or all?
We rent our copiers technically. They're, yes, we have a rental agreement with one vendor that provides copier and print management services.
And are some of those leases up?
They were, they were all going to be, they were all at the same time on the copiers. The printers, we own the printers, but we pay a management fee to service them. So it was a five-year agreement that we are going to extend for a couple more years.
The leases?
The rental, I'm calling, it's a rentals technically, but yes, it almost means the same thing.
You're going to extend the time?
Correct.
That we are going to rent them?
Yes, and we're going to refurbish them, and we have language that if, you know, if the copier's just breaking down a lot, then we're going to require them to replace it with either a new one or a refurbished one.
Now, how, do you know, I'm coming out of the top of your head, do we have like at least two in every school? Can, I'm just wondering if a number of copiers, I'm imagining somebody's keeping track of how many copies are being made in each school each day.
Correct, by each device, yes.
And is there, is it possible we don't need three in one school? We can only need two? Or wouldn't that really make a difference as far as the leasing?
I don't think, I think, at this point, I think we want to keep the same type of specs. I think at the end of this, we may revisit it, but I don't think we're going to reduce copiers. We may find that, you know, some of the copiers we have, we could go with possibly a lower, what do they call it, a monthly cycle or monthly, you know, copy number. But we're not going to do that now with the existing lease. One, because we would have, agreement, we would have to rebid those particular items, because they don't meet the specs, et cetera.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
No other questions?
I don't think. I think. That one's yours.
This last item we have here is, as you know, this summer, we were hiring, we're hiring Jonathan Costa to come in and work with us to revisit and relook at our strategic plan and to help us create the vision of a graduate. And so we're going to also add this to our list of requests for unencumbered funds. So you'll see this come up again, this dollar amount come up again in June. But we also put this item on here as well.
So that's just a move from last, or from next year to this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But that's a one-time thing?
That's a one-time, correct.
Any other questions on that?
Any other questions on that? Okay.
All right, moving to the next one.
Can you give us a total about, can you?
$2,054,423.
So that is the total cuts, is that what you're telling me?
We're proposing on these non, yeah, on these, yes.
So out of, okay, so the 1.46 is what we have left to come up with out of the 3.5?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was your amount? Thank you.
What is that? What is that?
Non-staff, non-staff, options.
Reducted.
So, Mr. Vado, these are a, this is what the total comes to for all of the things we looked at that are non-staff related.
Mr. Ross.
I have a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, I'm sorry.
That's right. I just have a question on special ed, transportation, special needs. Do we, is some of that covered by our contract with the bus company, or do we pay extra for all of it?
The in-district is part of the specialty contract, the specialty, excuse me, specialty transportation. The out-of-district is, we bid that out, we typically have two to three vendors providing those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it is pushing nine o'clock now. I know we've had two meetings this evening. I'd like to poll the board and see if they want to go on. We do have another budget meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. I do expect there to be lengthy conversations and in-depth questions as we talk about different options with staffing. I don't want to start and then have, leave it as a hanging thing and not finish and give it its due time, but, so I guess I'm polling the board. Do you want to start staffing this evening, or do you want to wait for the next budget workshop?
Wait for the next workshop.
Do you want to wait for the next workshop?
Yeah, I don't want to start it and get it a third of the way through. Makes no sense.
That's just my fear, is that if we start it, we will not finish it tonight, and it's a big deal. I don't want to feel like we're brushing through it or going fast, or we're not addressing it in the means that it needs to get the right attention. Is that everybody okay with that? Mr. Doring.
And personally, I'd rather see it all tonight, though we still have a week to think about it, but certainly the rest of the group would rather wait until next week. I'm not, I'm not upset about that either.
It would not be, thank you, Mr. Doring. Mrs. Roscoe, it would not be at our monthly board meeting. That's our standard, regular agenda. It would be at a special budget workshop on the 24th. Okay, you won't be on the 24th. I, yeah, I can't be here for the 25th. Mrs. Passeretti?
I was just going to ask, who, who would be able to show up for that?
For the 24th?
We're all here now, but I don't want to, I don't want to pick a date.
And we were here for multiple meetings tonight. We have not discussed as a board if that would be a virtual meeting or if that would be an in-person meeting, and I don't know if that matters at this point or not. We had multiple meetings tonight, so it didn't make sense for us to leave here and go home to be virtual. Mrs. Castelli, you look like you had a comment.
Yeah, I want, do you have any?
Can you use the mic? I'm sorry.
How long do you think?
I haven't seen a thing, so I really don't know, but I, I would expect that every line item that goes up there, whatever it's going to be, everybody's going to have some comments or questions upon it. I just want to give it the credit it deserves. This is not easy stuff.
Right, I agree.
I'm not trying to push it off, and I'm not trying to push it off because we have an audience either. I hope you all come again. It's, that's not it. It's, this is difficult stuff, and I, I, you know, I also don't want to make, you know, we're not making any decisions, but I also don't want to lose people by 11 o'clock tonight. We're here for a couple hours if we do staffing now. We're not going to get through it in 30 minutes. So we're here for a couple hours if we start it.
Yeah, then I, I'll go either way, but probably I would prefer to wait.
I just want to be transparent as to what we're getting into. If we start, I think we need, we have to finish. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, we're going to be talking about jobs here, jobs, losing teachers possibly, and I don't want to rush it, and I don't want to, I'm tired now already. I don't want to, I want to start fresh, and I want to see it. The jobs, jobs are too important. It's, it's going to be a long, hard decision, every, every cut we're talking about. So I, I absolutely want to wait.
Dr. Reed?
Yeah, I'd like to wait. I would like for it to be in person, too. I think that that would be important, given the personalness of it and losing jobs.
I understand. I understand, but I also want as much board participation as possible. These are meetings that are coming up with very short notice for the board. We usually have excellent attendance for the board, so like if it made a difference to somebody, then I would also try to, maybe we do a hybrid. If a board member had to dial in, we give that option. Like, I don't know, we're just, we just picked the date tonight, so we're just thinking this through. Dr. Roscoe?
I would, I, I don't know, I can't get this on. I would just like to say, I, when, when the, when it was sent out for the polling, like there was no response, right? So I can't be here on the 24th, but that, that really makes it look like I don't put value here, and I don't want my voice to not be heard, and I don't really, you know, I don't want to keep people here until midnight because it's not just about me, but I would like the opportunity to be able to not just feel like I'm being pushed along for the ride. And, you know, I, I just have to say that out loud, just because it is extremely important to me, and I think we're dealing with, with people, and that just doesn't sit right to me to not be able to, just because a poll went out and I wasn't available on one evening. So I just have to say that because it's upsetting.
We do have responses, actually. You may not have been copied on all of them, but we have responses from every board member. You know what? Let's, let's revisit this. I'll work with, all right, so scratch the fact that it will definitely be May 24th. Let's leave it as a maybe. It looks like there's two people that won't be here for May 24th, based on responses, and let's see what we can possibly shuffle from there. I don't have one of the, we were looking at three different dates. I don't have one date that all nine members can be here. So, and the, right, well, the other thing is we could take our items off of the town council for the 23rd because we're going, no, we can't. We got a contract that we have to bring to the town council. All right, I'm sorry, we're dragging this on in front of the public, and we don't mean to stall and do that.
What night is the town council?
That's the 23rd, but there's a contract going in front of the town council, so we have to be there for that.
But that's usually like the half hour before?
It starts at 6:30. So it's 6:00 to 6:30 is usually the briefing, then 6:30, then depending upon where we are in the agenda, we could get out of there at 7:30 or 8:00. Let's work with this tomorrow, and I'll talk to Linda and see what other options we have. It will be communicated as soon as we do have a date. We are trying to make it so that as, as many board members as possible can be there, and we will make sure that a communication goes out when we have a date. What I am hearing that is that we want to give the staffing portion of the budget, like our full attention for a whole evening. Dr. Reed?
Just one other suggestion. What about next Monday, since we all, I think, have planned on that anyway? Is there a way we could either add it, you know, after the meeting or replace the meeting or?
Monday's going to be a long meeting. I'll, you speak about Monday. It's going to be a long meeting to begin with.
So typically, our May meeting is longer. We honor a tremendous amount of our students, which is a fabulous evening as well, but it would be a longer evening to then add this on and to start that.
I know that we decided not to do it this Wednesday. Was there enough people who could come this Wednesday, two days from now? And I know, and I know, and I know it's because they're voting on it, but we're going to have to make cuts regardless, regardless if they veto the budget or not, we're going to have to make cuts. That number, that does not change. Maybe it's the amount that changes. So do we plan on coming this Wednesday anyway to start that process, knowing that we would have some flexibility, depending on what the council does?
We didn't have full participation this Wednesday either.
Okay. We had two that would be late and one that couldn't make it. Okay.
But are we ever going to find a night where we all can make it? That's the issue.
We're going to go back to the drawing board tomorrow and see what we can, it's hard. It's hard this time of year, and then we get into, you guys know I'm asking for speakers all the time to go to events to celebrate the students, and that's, that's very important as well. So let, let us go back to, let Danielle and I work with Linda tomorrow and see what else we can come up with and...
The people that can't make it, can they, is it because they can't come here and they could maybe do a hybrid, or they just can't be, just can't make the meeting? Okay. And I would agree that it should be in person as well.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I will, I appreciate everybody being here. I will open it up for public comment if there's anything that anybody would want to say that wasn't, if you weren't here earlier, or if you want to add anything that hasn't been said, or any comments. Again, we haven't taken consensus, we haven't taken any action on this, but if there's anything that you want to add, I'm sorry, am I messing you up saying that? Okay, Anne, can you just give her a second to change the camera? Thank you.
Hello again, Anne Verone Letterly. I want to thank you for working so hard on this central office. This cannot be easy. I'm astonished that we were able to get so much done tonight. Just in terms of the staffing issues, I do want to say, we've got a lot of nervous people, and I know you want to do right by them. And June 1st is, is looming, looming large. That's when contractually, teachers need to know what they're teaching for next year. We've always been told teachers around Memorial Day, and now it looks like it's going to be after Memorial Day, so it's just adding to the stress. And I understand your stress. I can see it on your faces. I know that your jobs aren't easy, but please be aware of that as well, and thank you again.
Thank you again to everybody who came tonight with no other official business to come before the board. I will call this meeting adjourned at 8:59. Thank you.